Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. And if I could invite the scouts from Cub Scout PAC 516 up front and center here, they are going to lead us in the pledge. Everybody please rise and join us for the pledge. Come on up, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, hang on, guys. I think it's working. It's not working, is it? Is it working? All right, very good. All right, guys, back up here and kind of face out this way. Your mom's gonna appreciate that. She's gonna get better pictures that way. Here we go. Here we go. Line up over here. All right, I'd like you to introduce yourself, and if somebody can tell me why you are here, feel free to speak up when it comes to you. You want to introduce yourself?
I'm Tyson Keller.
Christian Chase.
Wait, do I say my name in my last name?
Yes.
I'm Connor Rudy.
There we go.
Cody Chase.
I'm Amelia Pelton.
I'm Xavier Roger.
All right. Does anybody know why you were here tonight? You remember?
We're here for a scout requirement called Building a Better World.
All right. They had to come in and suffer through me for a half an hour at 6:00, so you earn it. So, thank you very much for leading us in our pledge, and I know that you guys have another commitment, so I know that you can't stay for the council meeting, but I sure appreciate you coming up and leading us in our pledge, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Geisler.
Thank you. All right, let's adopt this evening's agenda, please.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'd move adoption of the agenda with one addition, and that is the addition of the minutes for Coon Rapids City Council Meeting of October 18th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Johnson and a second by Carlson to adopt the agenda with the added minutes. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The agenda is adopted, and we are up to item two, Police Department Promotional Ceremony. This is kind of a first, isn't it, Captain? Chief Snaky? Wow! I'm kind of blanking myself here on these promotions. Chief Snaky, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am pleased to be here tonight, celebrate the promotions of three of our officers. With a promotional ceremony, that is the first of its kind for our department. To answer your question, Mr. Mayor, these officers have spent years preparing for this moment. They each bring different levels of experience and their own style of leadership to the team. I'm proud of the three of these individuals, and it's important to recognize them, while I also thought it was important for the community to meet our new law enforcement leaders. That's why we're here tonight. So with me tonight is Sergeant Interna Kim, Sergeant Dan Freiberg, and Captain Adam Jacobson. Our sergeants, they oversee the daily operations of the police department, the patrol unit most specifically, and they are the incident commanders during critical incidents and high priority calls for service. As first-line supervisors, they are the most influential leaders in our department. When things go right on the street, it's due mostly in part to their oversight and guidance. Captains are an integral part of the command staff. They lead the three different divisions of the department while providing me with valuable advice and guidance. Supervisors, in a few moments, you'll be officially sworn in and pinned with your gold badge. Every time you pin this badge on, I want you to remember something, that leadership's not about being the best, it's about making everybody else better. Our department has enjoyed a long history of excellence, and there's no doubt in my mind the three of you will ensure this tradition continues. Interna Kim was born during his parents' journey to America from their home country of Cambodia. He settled in St. Paul, which is where he grew up. Interna was hired by Coon Rapids as a patrol officer in 2005. While on patrol, he taught dare for two years at Hamilton and Adams Elementary Schools, man after my own heart, and served as a statewide honor guard for Lima at the Law Enforcement Memorial Association for seven years. Interna was assigned to Anoka Henepin Narcotics and Violent Crimes Task Force as a detective from 2012 to 2015, during which he was responsible for the takedown of the largest heroin drug trafficking organization in the state. Nice job. From 2016 to 2021, he was one of the department's K-9 handlers, working with his partner Ike. Interna and Ike, they graduated top of their K-9 class. In 2017, they were named top rookie dog team, and in 2018, they took first place in the statewide K-9 competition. Their outreach initiatives made them extremely popular around town. In 2021, Interna was assigned as a general detective specializing in retail crimes. He has stayed active with Lima, now serving as a board member, and is also a member of the Minnesota Asian Peace Officer Association. And thanks to him, Coon Rapids will be hosting their annual monthly meeting later on this month, the first time that meeting's ever been held outside St. Paul. Once again, good job. Interna has received three CRPD Awards of Merit and was awarded the City of Coon Rapids Community Service Award in 2018. Welcome to the supervisory team, Sergeant Interna Kim. Please come forward to be pinned and sworn in. Interna's wife Lindsay and their daughter Hazel will be doing the honors. Want you to step forward.
When you and Ike won that award, I always like to remind people, it came at the cost of what? What body part did you give up?
I broke my clavicle.
In the middle of the competition, he still carried Ike across the finish line with a broken collarbone, so, yeah, that was an impressive day. All right, so let's see. Now, I'm gonna, you're gonna raise your right hand, and I'm gonna hold that over here, and you're gonna say, "I, Interna Kim, do solemnly swear."
I, Interna Kim, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police sergeant.
The duties of a police sergeant.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
In the county of Anoka.
In the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Dan Freiberg grew up in the Monticello area. His law enforcement path started as a Wright County Sheriff's Office Explorer for three years while in high school. In 2008, Dan was hired by the Anoka Police Department as a police reserve security officer assigned to the Anoka Metro Regional Treatment Center, where I started my law enforcement career. He worked there while attending paramedic school in St. Cloud. After receiving his paramedicine degree, Dan began working for an ambulance service where he still works part-time today. In 2010, Dan was hired in Coon Rapids as a community service officer, and he worked in that capacity for two years before being hired as a police officer in 2012. As a patrol officer, he worked as a DWI enforcement officer, was a field training officer, and a community police officer assigned to our retail unit. Dan served as the Patrol Union Stewart and is currently the president of the Coon Rapids Police Association. Dan has received six CRPD Awards of Merit, was selected as a 2016 DWI All-Star Enforcer by the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, and holds a bachelor's degree in law enforcement from Metropolitan State University. Welcome to the supervisory team, Sergeant Dan Freiberg. Please come forward to be pinned and sworn in. Dan's wife Sherry will be doing the honors along with their children Grace, Hank, and Ruby. Come on forward, guys.
Good to see you. All right, we're gonna do the raise the right hand thing, and I'm gonna hold that there.
Okay.
"I, Dan Freiberg, do solemnly swear."
"I, Dan Freiberg, do solemnly swear."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota."
"And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota."
"And discharge faithfully."
"And discharge faithfully."
"The duties of a police sergeant."
"And the duties of a police sergeant."
"For the city of Coon Rapids."
"For the city of Coon Rapids."
"In the county of Anoka."
"County of Anoka."
"And state of Minnesota."
"State of Minnesota."
"To the best of my judgment and ability."
"To the best of my judgment and ability."
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And last but not least, Adam Jacobson grew up in Eagan. He was an Eagan Police Explorer for seven years and a CSO for the Bloomington Police Department for two years prior to being hired in Coon Rapids as a patrol officer in 2005. While on patrol, Adam served as a field training officer for eight years and coordinated our Police Explorer Program for 10 years. He was CRPD's very first DWI enforcement officer and set the bar high for all those to follow. Adam was a general detective from 2018 until 2020 when he was promoted to patrol sergeant. As a sergeant, he became the coordinator of the department's field training program, UAS or Drone Unit, and the Police Explorer Program. He's actually been involved with the Police Explorers for almost 25 years. Nice job, Adam. Adam holds a bachelor's degree in law enforcement from Metropolitan State University and a master's degree from the University of St. Thomas in public safety and law enforcement leadership. Adam has received the following awards during his career. It's a long list. The Mother's Against Drunk Driving Award for being one of CRPD's top DWI enforcement officers in 2006, 2007, 2008, 2009, and 2010. CRPD's Award of Merit for his DWI enforcement efforts in 2011, 2012, 2014, and 2015. In 2008, 2011, he was recognized as a member of the Minnesota Department of Public Safety DWI All-Star Team. He's received five different DWI hat-trick awards from the Office of Traffic Safety, which means three or more DWI arrests in a single shift. It's pretty impressive. He's received six other CRPD Awards of Merit, and finally, he's been awarded one CRPD Award of Valor. One piece of advice I received from my predecessor, where are you, Brad? When I was promoted to chief, was to surround yourself with leaders who make up for your deficiencies. Have you met Adam? Welcome to the supervisory team, Captain Adam Jacobson. Please come forward to be pinned and sworn in. Adam's mother, Renell Hamm, will be doing the honors.
Was the Award of Valor, was that the lethal, no, not lethal, it happened in Blaine. Okay, had a different situation. You have been a star, I know that. All right, here we go. I'm gonna switch this up. Here we go. "I, Adam Jacobson, do solemnly swear."
"I, Adam Jacobson, do solemnly swear."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota."
"And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota."
"And discharge faithfully."
"And discharge faithfully."
"The duties of a police captain."
"The duties of a police captain."
"For the city of Coon Rapids."
"For the city of Coon Rapids."
"In the county of Anoka."
"In the county of Anoka."
"And state of Minnesota."
"And state of Minnesota."
"To the best of my judgment and ability."
"To the best of my judgment and ability."
Congratulations.
I was just gonna, to wrap up, I'd like to say, Mayor and council, thanks for letting us host this first-ever promotional ceremony. It's an honor to be in front of you again. I'd like to thank friends and family for coming tonight. I know it means a lot to these three that you're here. We'll meet out in the hallway for photo opportunities, but the mayor would like you all to know that you don't have to leave. You're welcome to stay for the council meeting.
Do we have to give them a pass like we did the scouts?
It's up to you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. All right. That brings us up to our, oh, no, approval of our minutes from our October 18th meeting. I almost forgot that.
Motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second it.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Johnson to approve the meeting minutes for the October 18th, 2022 council meeting. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. One abstention, Councilmember Pablo Hernandez Jr. All right, and, okay, and we are up to our consent agenda, and we have three items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is to accept the third quarter financial report. The financial, this is the financial summary of all funds for the third quarter. It's all presented here for our review, and assuming the council has no specific questions, no action is necessary other than to acknowledge receipt of this report. And if we have any questions, we'll get to those at the end of the consent agenda. Item four, which is the second item on our consent agenda, is to accept the resignation of Charter Commission member Elizabeth Denon and recommend new appointment to the Charter Commission. When the Charter Commission met in October of 2022, they expressed an interest in adding another member to the commission. One resident, David Blinkow, has expressed an interest in being on the Charter Commission and has submitted an application which is attached here for our review. State statute requires that a minimum of seven and no more than 15 persons serve on the Charter Commission. Currently, the Charter Commission has eight members. If we follow both recommendations on the agenda, the commission will continue to have eight members. So we're looking to recommend for an appointment, I'm sorry, any of our recommendations, and that's all they are, is recommendations for appointments, are forwarded to the Honorable Stony Hildes Chief Judge for the 10th Judicial District, who makes the final appointment. It was a lot easier to introduce him when he was just the old city attorney, you know. Charter Commission member Elizabeth Denon contacted the city and gave her resignation, and then were asked to formally accept her resignation. So we're looking to accept the resignation of Elizabeth Denon and declare a vacancy, and then recommend to the Chief Judge for the 10th Judicial District that David Blinkow be appointed to serve a four-year term effective January 3rd, 2023, with said term to expire in May of 2027. Item five, which is the third and final item on our consent agenda, we're looking to approve a memorandum of understanding for the sale of a ladder truck. We're looking to sell a 2009 Pierce Velocity 75-foot ladder truck to the city of Orano, Minnesota, for $349,000. The purchase has been approved by the Orano City Council, and a memorandum of understanding has been signed by Orano and is now being presented to council for approval. This particular ladder truck was being used as a reserved truck for a period of time, but is now excess equipment and is no longer needed. So we're looking to approve the memorandum of understanding with Orano for the sale of the 2009 Pierce Velocity 75-foot ladder truck.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Hernandez Jr. Is there discussion or questions?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I would just like to thank Beth and Jerry Denon for their long service to Coon Rapids. I think I've known them for going on 45 years, and Jerry was a longtime employee at the county attorney's office, one of the investigators there, and Beth has been a longtime volunteer and provided a lot of service to the city of Coon Rapids. So thank you to both of them for that dedication and service.
And thank you to David Blinkow for stepping up.
Absolutely. Look forward to him on the Charter Commission.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item six is to hold a public hearing and consider resolution approving the 2022-2 miscellaneous assessment levy uncontested. Ms. Hanson, did you want to present anything on this, or do you want me to read the bullet points, or zip?
Since the public hearing was set, we've had some payments and some appeal, six appeals that will be considered by the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. To date, the amount would be $130,415 to be considered for certification.
Okay. Very good. Does anybody have any questions on this before we have the assessment hearing? Okay. Well, then, we will open the assessment hearing to collect any written appeals. Does anybody have a written appeal they would like to turn in during the hearing assessment?
I would just note, this would be your last opportunity to do that.
Okay, that sounds kind of final. All right, so with that in mind, nobody here for the hearing assessment to present a written appeal? We will close that, and then we've got three different resolutions there. Somebody want to move those, or?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
I'll make, should we do them all at once or one at a time?
You can do them all at once.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-105, adopting 2022 Sub 2 miscellaneous special assessments, unopposed, one year, and to adopt Resolution 22-106, adopting the 2022 Sub 2 miscellaneous special assessments, unopposed, three year, and to adopt Resolution 22-107, adopting 2022 Sub 2 miscellaneous special assessments, unopposed, seven years.
Second.
Motion by Grischoviac and a second by Carlson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Be around to, item seven, consider adoption of ordinance 2271, restricting parking on 125th Lane. And everybody should have a revised ordinance 2271. What's the difference from this to the original? Does it mean it looks like it doesn't change anything fundamentally?
It doesn't change anything as far as the restrictions. It's just a clarification on the wording of the location. It was a little confusing before.
Okay, very good. Item seven. All right, we've already introduced this, and we're looking to adopt a no parking ordinance on the east side of 125th Lane for a distance of approximately 525th north and south along 125th Lane located west of Shenandoah. And this is basically the road, the parallel Shenandoah Boulevard, and is used for access by all the townhomes to the west, the Ashley Oaks Townhome Association. So does anybody have any questions on this, or anybody want to move it?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2271, restricting parking on the east side of 125th Lane for a distance of approximately 525 feet north and south along 125th Lane located west of Shenandoah Boulevard.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Johnson. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
This question is directed at Mr. Himmer. So I was contacted by a resident who asked me to come out to Shenandoah Boulevard last week, and he showed me the difference in, you know, in the widths of the roadways between Shenandoah Boulevard and, you know, the, what would be the service drive Shenandoah Boulevard, 125th Lane. And he understands why we need to enact this ordinance, but he was, you know, he's gonna lose, they're gonna lose half the parking in the neighborhood. And his concern was, you know, how did we get here? How do we get, end up with a roadway that's, you know, three feet shorter, or three feet narrower, right there next to 125th Lane, which seems to be the appropriate width. And so his question is, how did we get there?
Yeah, Councilmember Carlson, council, it was a result of the reconstruction on Main Street back in 2010. This all pre, we were digging into this late last week, and 125th used to connect directly to Shenandoah. So when Main Street was improved, they had to add some additional turn lanes. It just became a right-in, right-out scenario, and so that to get a full access to that area, they extended this frontage road up. All the services from the utilities were stubbed north and south, so I don't believe it was ever really intended for homes to be necessarily constructed. There was such a large swath of property in there. It was almost as if something was gonna redevelopment, redevelop, maybe a cul-de-sac or something different. In the 10 years I've been here, there have been three proposals for homes where they are today on 125th Lane. It's a difficult parcel. There's wetlands. The sanitary sewer was shallow. Each of the homes had to cut in utilities. So this was built kind of as a frontage road for the townhome development to the west. It's similar width to that. The way it developed probably wasn't the way it was envisioned to develop. If we had to do it all over again, when we approved those townhomes, or those homes there on 125th, we would have enacted the no parking at that time. It's similar with other locations where we have concerns for emergency parking or emergency access. So it was an afterthought, I think, as part of the full, or the Main Street reconstruction project, and then a creative developer who was able to fit in lots in that location. We missed an opportunity when we approved it. We should have done the no parking at that time. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Grischoviac.
I appreciate those comments, councilmember, because I was kind of wondering the same thing. But my comments are that I have heard from several neighbors in that area, and they're all, they're all okay with this. They think it makes sense. And, you know, I was doing some research myself, and we do this on other streets in the city. I know there's a really similar situation over on Vintage Street over there, and I was kind of looking around, so I definitely support this move to restrict the parking to make it straight, safer for our emergency vehicles and other access.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we're on And we're on to item eight, which is to consider adoption of ordinance 2272 restricting parking on Mississippi Boulevard. And now this is the south side of Mississippi Boulevard, from the Mississippi Regional Trail Crossing near Uplander Street, for 150 feet to the east and the west. So it's down, it's west of Hanson Boulevard on Mississippi Boulevard, right by the trail head, and so that we're looking to make it no parking on the south side of Mississippi Boulevard, 150 feet to the east and west of the trail head. Anybody need anything further information? Mr. Hammer, did we hear anything back from anybody else on this? Or from anybody, I should say?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we did have two responses in support. They were just curious where a few vehicles would be displaced to, but they were supportive of the initiative.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'd move adoption of an ordinance restricting parking on the south side of Mississippi Boulevard from the Mississippi Regional Trail Access near Uplander Street to 150 feet to the east and west from that.
Second.
Motion by Johnson and a second by Ray Rower. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Yeah, I really would appreciate this ordinance. That's a real tricky crossing there, and it hasn't, I've tried to cross them, I've crossed it successfully, fortunately, but it's tough. You've got to really look around those cars to get there and to make a safe crossing. So it's, it's great to have this 150 feet on either side.
Yep, all right. Any other discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Are we adopting the resolution, or are we just introducing it tonight?
We should be adopting it tonight. We introduced it last meeting.
Okay.
All right, other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Item nine is to consider Resolution 22-108 amending the 2022 budget for the Coon Rapids Ice Center. I like reading this. This is all about priorities. We were, we were going to, we had, we'd budgeted for an ice cream cart, but then we realized we need a new kivak machine for cleaning everything, so the ice cream cart's gonna wait, we're gonna get a new cleaning machine. Is that kind of the way that this works? Ms. Ring, did you want to?
Sure. Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, that's exactly how I would describe it. The kivak machine that we have gets a lot of use by staff. It is getting old, it breaks down a lot. So yes, it's a priority that we would like to amend the budget. There's a slight additional cost of $507 that was not part of the 2022 budget. As you mentioned, the mobile ice cream cart was in the budget for $4,000, but if you approve this, we would go ahead with the purchase of the kivak for a slightly larger amount of money, and yes, it is the priority for staff right now versus the other piece of equipment.
Sure. All right, Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to authorize Resolution 22-108 amending the 2022 general fund for the purchase of Coon Rapids Ice Center equipment.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Hernandez Jr. Is there discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Thinking of all those poor kids without the ice cream now.
They're still gonna have ice cream.
All right, as long as you say so. All right. Item 10 is to consider introduction of an ordinance amending the city code related to advisory commissions. Ms. Lenzmeyer, did you want to hit this, or do you want me to read your bullet points?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is an item in follow-up to the work session conversation related to some code cleanup and amendments to remove some commissions that just aren't active and not necessary and needed at this point, so if you don't have any questions, I'll leave it at that.
All right. Anybody have any questions on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I recall in our work session, we, there was some discussion by some council members regarding terms of the chairs. Would that have to be codified in any way, or is that just something that happens organically within the commissions?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, that is not something that's in the code. We can talk about that at the staff level and make that part of the recommendations we bring to you when we come with the appointments at the first of the year.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
That was just a, kind of a chit-chat.
I did.
Yeah, okay. All right, if there's no further questions, then we will consider the ordinance amending city code related to advisory commissions introduced. And we are up to the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here for open mic this evening? Want to address council for open mic? No? All right. I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. Ms. Lenzmeyer, something changed today with voting, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Today is the startup direct balloting, where those that wish to vote absentee can put their ballot directly in the machine, so we were busy today. We're open here at City Hall from 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. We have some Saturday hours, Saturday, this coming Saturday, from 10:00 to 3:00. Then we're open extended hours on Monday till 5:00 PM, and then after that, it's Election Day on Tuesday, the 8th, and the polls will be open at your regular polling locations from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
All right, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Tuesday, the 8th. All right. Other business.
Mayor, Council, me, maybe I'll just put Mr. Hammer on the spot quickly. We're transitioning in seasons. You might not know it by the weather today, but we will be getting into cold weather, so a couple of things are happening, both in terms of overnight parking and street sweeping. So Tim, if you maybe want to fill, focus in on that.
Mr. Hammer.
Yes, thank you, Matt. Council, we are on, I think by the end of the day tomorrow, we'll have hit the city once with street sweeping. We want to probably get it a second time. We just, a lot of bulking, the first go around, we'll get a little more, get a little more to come up the second time around, so as Councilmember Geisler usually tells you, please keep your trashcans out of the street, basketball hoops, please do not push your snow leaves, everything into the street, protect our stormwater and make our jobs easier, and clean up your neighborhoods so we get good drainage and good road clearing during the winter months. This is the time that we got to clean up those streets in advance. Also, no parking goes into effect, what is it, mid-November, if I'm not mistaken? Today? November 1st. I thought it was the 15th. So that is no overnight parking on any city street, and that is for snow clearing activities. It's not just if snow is on the ground. The ordinance states, starting today, so I'm sure Chief Stanky and his staff may provide some reminders if necessary. If you're, if you know of anyone that has concerns in their neighborhood, we try to be a little nice the first go around and not have to worry about it once the snow hits the ground, so thank you, Matt.
That would be from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, right? Yep, got it. All right. Other, other business to come before council this evening? Mr. Hammer.
Mayor, Council, just an update. We did have open house on the 610 East River Road interchange last Thursday. There was a very good turnout. Most people were supportive and wanted to see the project move forward. There was certainly a large contingent of the people that live in that neighborhood about when is it gonna start, property acquisitions, is this project almost done? It was, it was quite, quite a turnout, more than I had anticipated, so we continue to move forward with that project. We've got a good website, and if anyone has any questions, they can certainly call me or tune into that website.
Mr. Hammer, so East River Road, I was driving through there today, and it looks like it's getting pretty well wrapped up. Lots of barrels yet, but all the curbs and most, looks like the asphalt, the striping is done. Any idea?
Yeah, they were working on the eastbound lanes of Foley, and they were working on the trail that's on the south side of Foley. They wanted to try to get all that work done without traffic. It is, it is planned for the week of the 7th, so next week, having the dual traffic signal functional in front of the parking ride facility, getting the buses back in through their no more routes. It will certainly be wrapped up by the end of the month, if not sooner. It's crunch time now, but it's moving along well.
Excellent. Yeah, it looks great. All right.
I did have one more.
Any others want to stem a little? Oh, you have one more?
Sorry, while I'm talking about.
You still have the floor, Mr. Hammer.
While I'm talking about open houses, there will be an open house on November 9th at the Springbrook Nature Center. Anoka County is proposing an intersection improvement on 85th and Evergreen, so right at the entrance to Springbrook. Preliminary design has a roundabout in that location, so all our welcome postcards, I believe, went out early this week, and so it is from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Springbrook Nature Center, November 9th.
Boy, that'd have to be a big roundabout with all those trucks that go in and out of that industrial park. Be interesting to see if we get anybody from RMS or the trucking company down there.
Magnum.
Magnum, yeah, thank you. All right. Other business to come before council.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, I'm sorry, wow. Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson, to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.